All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Plan Commission meeting for, what do we have here, February 26, 2025, coming to order at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Iker.
Present.
Alder Person Grimmer.
Here.
Commissioner Hausman.
Here.
Commissioner Jashinsky.
Here.
Commissioner Cranky.
Here.
Commissioner Merrick.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Excuse me. City Planner Amy Barrows.
Here.
And excused Commissioner Cahalan and Building Inspector Hussinger.
All right, thank you. Looking for a discussion on possible action on approval of the minutes for January 29. Move to approve?
I'll second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, minutes are approved. Is there any citizens' comments for items on the consent agenda, which is...
None.
None. Okay, so we'll go on to our public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight for conditional use for 805 Wall Street condominiums. Is the applicant here? There's a continuation of the last meeting. So if there's a need to refresh what they're about, or...
I don't think we have to refresh what they are up to, but I can go over the changes since the last meeting.
Please do.
Do you want to come sit up at the table?
You will get a question or two, I'm sure, so... If you wouldn't mind, since you're likely to speak, just turn on your mics and just introduce yourself. Name an address, please, for the record.
Tyler Foster. Address is 17500 West Liberty Lane.
Mark Elana, project engineer. I'm at S9W31380 Irwin Court in Wales.
Okay, so Mike, if you could put on, thank you, the landscape plan is on the screen. So just a few changes from last month's meeting, and we won't go through anything else unless you ask me to. They do have some concrete entrance and exit stoops that go into the units that do encroach into that 10-foot setback. However, the ordinance does allow a six-foot encroachment for stoops, for entrance stoops. So just know that those are, those have been added. They're needed for, in order to address the elevation change from the grade to the entry to the structure. And then, per the Public Works Committee, they did go to Public Works Committee, they did recommend that the number of exterior parking stalls be reduced. So the original plan included 12 exterior stalls in addition to the two garage stalls inside. That has been reduced to nine stalls. That's actually not showing up on the landscape plan. We can go to, you can probably just look at this one for now. So instead of, I believe it's four, in the, on the west side of the property, they reduced that to three. And then, on the northwest side of the property, they had two stalls on each side, and now there's one, but that one stall is a little bit wider in case they have bigger vehicles. But it does give them just a little bit more green space for stormwater management purposes on the north side. Mark?
And we removed the retaining wall on the east side of the...
He's speaking to the mic, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You don't have to hold it. There you go. Over, I'm coaching, but you're good now.
Okay, we removed the retaining wall on the east property line, which was a rock wall. And because we were able to remove that stall, then we sloped it down to grade, removing the wall. Kind of an important issue there.
Yep. And then, Public Works also made a recommendation to not require the entrance off of Lake Street, so their current plans do not, you know, include the grade, well, removing the retaining walls that accommodate the existing loading dock, and then blending that grade in with the site. They also, Public Works also had them remove this sidewalk that's on the landscape plan, so the applicants have been told to get rid of it, which might be in the revised plans that Tyler has with them. But they won't be putting in this sidewalk, or the, or they're not proposing to, based on Public Works' recommendation, or the crosswalk that gets to the Lake Country Trail on the south side of the road. Let's see, what else did they do?
Saved the tree.
Saved the tree. Well, okay, we can talk about that. At the last meeting, some of the neighbors came in and they wanted the beech tree in the corner of Lake Street and Wall Street saved. So the applicants are proposing to save it, but they're saving it by putting in a landscape wall in order to protect the grades around it. We are asking, the engineering staff has asked that they submit an arborist report verifying that it actually can be saved and that the root system isn't going to get destroyed, because if it is, then we should just deal with it now. So what I think is important tonight is for the Plan Commission to decide how important that beech tree is, because if it can't be saved, are you still willing to approve the plans? And should they mitigate by planting another tree in its, in its place, a smaller tree in a location that suits the site? They didn't change any plans, as far as I know, to the buildings, correct? Are they, they're, that's all the same, architecture's the same, colors are the same, materials are the same? The lighting plan? So they removed, at the recommendation of Plan Commission from the last meeting, they removed all of the pole lights. They really don't feel that they are necessary for this development. And instead are proposing just the recessed lights in the soffits of the building to provide a little security and lighting, just outside of the building. And then also, I think I got to go to, along the sides of the garages and entries, they have these sconce-type lights in two different sizes. So there's 24 that are a little bit smaller, and then 15 of them that are longer on here, but it's just a real light, cast light. Then, and they did provide photometrics. The photometrics do show that they comply with the lighting ordinance. And then for signage, they're proposing a sign on the, on the left side of the entry, which you can see the location on the landscape plan. Plan Commission does need to accept the location, because it is located within the 10-foot setback, but it is outside of the road right-of-way. They've reduced the size so that the gray portion of the sign complies with the 20-square-foot requirement, and then they have the added masonry monument and concrete base. There will, if you look in the bottom corner, there's, at night, there will be a little halo, internally lit element to it. The sign is faced, it's double-sided, it's faced perpendicular, I guess, to the road. So there is a, there's residential uses on the opposite side of the road, but the sign will be facing the other direction from the road. So they shouldn't be impacted by it. However, I do have on here, which matches St. John's subdivision, which has a similar, has that similar halo light feature, that they have to turn it off at 10 o'clock. So that's in the recommendations.
Amy, is there a sidewalk that goes in front of that, those pedestals?
In front of what?
The...
No, there are, there's not a sidewalk on the site, it's on the other side of the road.
Okay, all right.
Right, Mark?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, then, back to the landscape plan. So, because this was kind of one of the more substantial, outstanding items. The applicants have met with the neighbors, or, did you meet with the neighbors after the meeting? They, they do want to see a fence for privacy, at least the neighbors to the north. So they are proposing a fence north of the northwestern parking lot. It'll be just outside of the right-of-way, and I apologize, the plan appears to be a little bit blurry, but that fence has been reduced in height. And it is, what's the height of the fence? Six feet?
You're, please tap the bar on the, there you go, perfect.
I think the original fence, they were, the neighbors wanted, and they were talking about, was eight feet, so they did reduce it to six feet. And then there's an image of the fence, it will be a fully screened fence. And then, they do have these existing trees on the north side of the property too, that are being accounted for on the plan, is being protected, or I don't, I mean, it doesn't state that they're going to be removed, but Brian, with engineering, has indicated that that's where there's a drainage swale there, and that it would be impractical to keep those trees. So I'm not sure if you've, if you're proposing removal, if they're of certain species, then you would have to mitigate for the loss, either by planting or paying $250 an inch.
So we did, we did go out and have a landscape company do a tree survey, and none of the trees that will need to be removed, per Brian's recommendation, were under the protected species. And the updated landscaping plan then removed all existing trees that will not remain.
Okay. And are the, can you hand the revised landscape plan to the Plan Commissioners? So I don't think we have this plan. And then, are the neighbors aware that the trees are going to go?
Yes, they've requested. Yes, they requested several trees on their properties to come down as well, which we've agreed to.
Okay. And then, to the, well, staying on that side of the property, I guess, the west, if there, if there's a car parked on that west parking stall in the northwest corner, facing west, there's also residential property to the west. And they don't really have good shrubbery that they're proposing on the west side of the parking lot, though that's like a grass. And then they've got some plantings in the corner, but they may, I think it would be good to get some shrubs directly west of the parking lot, instead of the grasses, to make sure you're screening it. Then, to the east, they're proposing a fence along the north and east sides of that parking lot. I guess the question there is whether or not you'll have space to remove snow, because you're taking away the ability to dump the snow, where, where you actually have some green space there otherwise. So you may want to move the fence to give yourself some room. It could be, I mean, you could easily move the fence to the north. I don't know, do you need it to the east?
I believe that was added as part of Brian's review.
The fence?
Yes, along the east, to continue it along the east side of the parking there.
Oh.
It was, and then he wanted it screened with landscaping as well.
Yeah, so I think the landscaping is important, but isn't that the backside of the landscape business?
Correct.
There aren't windows or anything, really. I, I don't, I wouldn't think that fencing would be necessary on that side if you put some shrubs in to screen the parking area.
Yeah, we definitely would be fine with removing the fence there.
And then I would just move the fence to the north, to give yourself some space. Other than that, I think that kind of covers the, am I missing anything else on changes to the landscape plan?
The revised one shows the removal of that crosswalk, or the sidewalk to the trail, and also, they wanted a call-out for a protected tree well on the beech tree, if we're able to save it, so that was added as a call-out. And then on the northeast corner, the plantings there of the tree did conflict with a drainage swale, so we're just going to move it to the south, a couple feet to take it out of the swale.
Okay. And you're aware of the arborist request?
Yes, we are already working with an arborist to get that report done.
Okay. And then, let's see, it looks like you fixed the parking lot is accurate, the parking stalls. We just want to make sure, so one thing before it goes to council, is we want to make sure the landscape plan, the civil plans, and all other plans match, the condominium plat, everything's got to line up. We talked about signage. The signage does comply with the code now, and then, engineering, engineering has been reviewing updated plans. Mark has been submitting very expeditiously. And there, it's getting pretty narrow, the comments, so really, they just need to modify, get final, you know, make sure we've got the final plans where everything matches. And then they're going to need to obtain necessary permits, and for common council, get the stormwater management maintenance plan approved, and it sounds like a developer's agreement, and then we'll have to collect a letter of credit. And then they did, what was missing from the last meeting is the condominium plat, so there is a condominium plat included this month. And the condominium plat, so this is really recorded, they already submitted a CSM for recording, so we have that all taken care of, to combine all of the parcels. And then the condominium plat identifies ownership, so the units themselves will be individually owned by each unit owner, and then the remaining space will be in, I mean, there'll be common areas and limited common elements. And then, all of the responsibilities, and what they can and can't do, and financial obligations are all in the Declaration of Restrictions, which are in the packet, and bylaws, and the city attorney is reviewing those. What we'll probably end up doing is adding a couple of the conditions from the conditional use, and referencing the conditional use in the Declaration of Restrictions. Because the unit owners know to look at the Declaration of Restrictions, they don't always know to look at the restrictions of the CU. We already talked about Public Works. Deanna, am I missing anything from Public Works? You want to save the beech tree, get rid of the trail, and not require Lake Street access, and reduce the parking stalls.
No, that's it.
Okay. And then... And then, we already... Just as a refresher, from last month's public hearing, neighbors were generally in favor of the development, requesting that that beech tree be saved, that lighting be kept to a minimum, which the plan really has been revised quite substantially, and that fencing be established along the north lot line, and that drainage be reviewed carefully, which engineering is working through. So as part of the public hearing, that's all I have to add.
Only question I have, Amy, is the conditional use, 12-month expiration, is that city code?
Is the... I'm sorry. The conditional use, what?
It noted in the document that the conditional use permit for the project expires in 12 months.
Oh, it's not that it expires in 12 months? If they don't start the project within 12 months, then it expires... Then they lose their approval? Because then what it allows you to do is start all over, in case there's any code changes or neighborhood change conditions, then they have to start from scratch. My understanding... I think they're gonna start pretty quick.
Is that in city code?
No, it's a typical... There's a site you have to... When you get site plan approval, you have to do the project within a year. And this is conditional use and site plan approval, but it's a standard condition. It's been in all of our recent developments.
So it's customary.
Yeah, yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to add, or...
No.
Okay. Any commission requests or questions for the developer at this point? This is part of the public hearing. We can... We're going to the approval next, after we hear citizens' comments, too, if there's any.
I have a few things. So there's not gonna be a path in front of this development? A walking path?
The walking path is on the south side of the road, and established. What we were trying... What they proposed at the last month's meeting was a sidewalk that gets you from their development to the path on the south side of the road.
Okay.
So that's the... What is it? The Lake Country Trail?
Lake Country.
That's there. And so I think Public Works likely deemed that this was a... More like a neighborhood street, where there's no need for it, based on the lack of intensity of the development?
That, and we're trying to reduce mid-block crossings.
Yeah.
Just not good to have. So, yeah, it's very low intensity here.
Okay. Garbage pickup. Is it that the garbage trucks have to go into this and pick up from each condo? Or is there going to be two dumpsters?
That's a good question. That's not something that I usually... They'd have to reach out to John's. I would... I don't know if they're gonna wheel them out to the road, or if John's comes in with those little tiny vehicles.
No, they don't have small...
Not around here anymore.
Nope.
They would have to take their six bins out to the road.
Or they'd contract on their own.
Then they'll have to...
We were gonna go private.
Yeah.
Okay.
What... Excuse me? What'd you say?
Private. We were gonna contract the garbage pickup privately.
Okay.
Like the... I'm sure the apartments across the street have the same thing.
So Mike can talk to the attorney. We might wanna add something to the Declaration of Restrictions regarding garbage pickup?
Yeah.
We have hours of operation for timing of pickup for the downtown area. I don't know if this is included in that, but that's a good thing to follow up on.
Yeah.
Because of... Some people were trying to get ahead of the curve in picking up garbage at 5:00 a.m., and that was not cool with some of the people that live next door. So, yeah, that's a good question. Thanks, Laura.
Yeah. The other one I have, please try to save the beech tree. There... I'll bet there's not a handful of them left in this area. They're pretty rare. And I'm... It upsets me sometimes when we keep cutting down trees, because when I came here years ago, Delafield had large oak savannas. We don't have them anymore. So please try to save the tree, if you can.
We will.
That, and I did drive past your property tonight, because I wanted to know about the driveway on Lake Street. And I seen that it's even with the road, and it's a loading dock. I'm always worried about public safety, and I would prefer that the drives stay, and that it only be for emergency vehicles. That way it gives all these... Because I've... My neighbor had a fire, and I know how many vehicles are gonna show up. It gives them a way to get in and out, if you can do this circular thing. So I would... That's my recommendation, to put an emergency drive there for only emergency vehicles.
Public Works looked at that and said, "No to that, Laura. You lose the parking spots here if you do that."
Well, add the parking spots, one spot somewhere where that you took out.
It's two you would lose.
Well...
It really...
I'm more concerned about public safety. I know what can happen. And I'm always the person who thinks, "What if?" And I would prefer to put in some protection ahead of time for those "what ifs." So it's something that I would recommend.
Is there any other questions or comments for the petitioner? Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak to this public hearing? There's two individuals here. We'll say no. So the public hearing for this 805 Wall Street condominiums is now closed. So go on to item eight. You can stay there, because you're gonna be coming up unless there's a... Is there any citizens' comments for items other than what's on the consent agenda? I see no. So citizens' comments are now closed. So go to unfinished business, which, thank you for being up here, is you again. So this would be DLC 079... DLC 0798075, and DLC 0798066002805 Wall Street and Adjacent Lands. Applicant Tyler Foster, Ware Design and Build, requesting a conditional use site plan and appearance approval to allow development of a six-unit multifamily condominium development. So is there anything to tee this up for action? Amy?
The only thing... So if you read my recommendation, I actually left the leading sentence from the last meeting, so that should be changed. Recommend, instead of providing feedback, it would be recommend approval, subject to the following conditions, and I do have several conditions, including limiting the use of the property to the six multifamily residential units, with a maximum of two units per building and a total of three buildings, with the construction being in substantial compliance with the plans prepared by Ware Design Bill dated November 26 and presented to the commission on February 26. The certified survey map combining the lots needs to be recorded, reviewed and approved and recorded. We've got that ready to go. Condition number three is all conditions of the engineering department need to be complied with, and the property shall be developed in substantial compliance with the civil plans prepared by Elena Engineering, revised on February 14, except as modified and approved by the city. I should say, except of the modifications approved by the city. The fire department shall review the final site civil and engineering plans, and all of their comments shall be addressed. My understanding is they have approved the plans. We just wanna make sure they approve the final, final version. Delhart shall review the proposed development and grant the sewer extension to the site, and the applicant will be required to pay any necessary dwelling unit equivalent and impact fees prior to commencing any construction. And the landscape plan prepared by Bauer Design Build with a revision date of February 12 shall be submitted to the engineering department for review and approval. And an arborist shall determine the likelihood of the beech tree surviving, and mitigation may be required in its place. If substantial changes are requested, as determined by the engineering department, the plans shall be resubmitted to Plan Commission for review and approval prior to commencing any construction. So I would say, if that beech tree does have to be removed for some reason, and we can always make sure that it comes back to you to discuss whether or not that's acceptable, unless you wanna make that decision tonight. And then, the signs shall comply with the rendering submitted to Plan Commission at their February 26 meeting. Light intensity of the sign shall not result from internal or external illumination exceeding 40-foot candles when measured with a standard light meter held perpendicular to the sign face at a distance of 10 inches from the sign. And the lighting of the sign shall be programmed to turn off at 10:00 p.m., and lumen output shall not exceed 300. That's a direct copy from St. John's. And then, the condition that Scott was referring to, the conditional use permit shall automatically terminate within 12 months from the date the CU is approved by council, unless construction has commenced within the 12-month period, and the applicant enters into a developer's agreement with the city that includes a requirement that the property be fully developed within two years. And then, staff is directed to draft a conditional use agreement that memorializes these conditions for consideration by the council, and it will need to be recorded.
Amy, on the landscape plan, and correct me, either the applicant or you, if I'm wrong. It sounds like the tree, I'm gonna... You just say is 50/50 as to whether it's gonna survive. I think they said they would accommodate, if it can't survive, a new tree. So I'm wondering if, why we wouldn't just put that in here, rather than bringing it back?
Yeah. You can, if you're comfortable with that. If that's what you're comfortable with, you can...
What would be the downside of doing it that way?
If you insist that they change their plans to save the tree.
They're gonna have an arborist review it. He may have some recommendations that could save the tree.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
The early comments from the arborist are that he believes the tree will be able to be saved. It's a healthy tree. It's relative to what we're doing here. Its root system will be protected. The only caveat was, he said, "It's winter, so I can't speak on its canopy."
Yeah.
So...
Good.
Well, there's good public support for... And sentiment to keep it, so we appreciate your efforts, and keep that in mind as we're moving forward.
Absolutely.
I wanted one in my front yard, and I was told that they're hard to get going. So you've got one, keep it. That's the ruling.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use site plan and appearance DLC 0798075 and DLC 0798066002, contingent on items one through nine in the packet.
I'll second.
Any further discussion or comments?
Do we need to add the garbage verbiage?
You don't have to. It says in here that we... Staff has to review the restrictions, and I made a note of it to add that. It's up to you. It's in the discussion.
And I'd just comment that if this is outside of the area of the downtown district where there was restrictions on time, that this be included in that.
Yeah. Okay.
Good.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay. It's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And start digging. Except by the tree. Okay. All right.
You can't dig yet. You gotta go to council.
I know. Okay. We'll assume the best. Okay. Let's see here. Next item up. I know. Hang on. Item 10, new business. 10A DLC 0804982, 2910 Gulf Road. Owner Nagawaki MZL LLC. We'll skip the rest. Applicant is seeking a business review or plan of operation and permanent signage to approve the operation of a sub shop known as Jersey Mike Subs. I see your logo. Please come up, please, and introduce yourself. And as Amy... Well, why don't you introduce yourself? Just tap the bottom bar, name and address, please, and then Amy can introduce the topic.
Yes, Aaron Lee's, 5934 Julian Road, Bettendorf, Iowa.
Okay. So the only reason why the sign isn't on the consent agenda, it otherwise does comply with the size requirements, the operation... Well, I should say, it's not just signage. It includes business plan of operation for Jersey Mikes, which is taking the place of Bentley's Pet Shop. I think you know where the building is located, where Starbucks and Five Guys is. The reason why I did not have it on the consent agenda is it will be the only sign that is not channel letters on a raceway. However, it is... They do have a backer board, but they are still channel letters. So you will still see the letters sticking out. They just have the blue background to enhance their logo. And then, that same sign is on both sides of the building, so the east and west sides facing 83 on the parking lot. And then they do have panel signage as well. That's the... On the big freestanding sign on Gulf Road. So I just wanna make sure you guys are comfortable with the backer board.
Yeah. I think...
So question, is the since 1956, and the subs, is that part of the backer board? And then the Jersey Mikes is the letters that are set out? Or are all those letters set out?
All of the letters are set out.
Okay. So it's not a tin sign stapled to a brick wall?
Correct.
Okay. And are these backlit at all, or are they...
They're internally...
Internally lit?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the material that the sign is made out of?
Here, I can tell you.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
It's okay.
Um, did I put it in here?
I could pull it up in an email.
So they will have... It's an aluminum backer board with a vinyl face. The actual letters themselves are silver trim caps, white acrylic faces, and aluminum returns.
So the sides?
Yeah, the sides will be aluminum.
Okay.
So I think that part of it will look really similar to everything else that's out there. It's really...
And it's weather durable, too, in terms of fading and so forth.
Yeah. It's... I've had... I have signs that are almost nine years old, and they still look very fresh, so...
Well, it stands out. People ought to see you.
Well, and that's why I would fight for it, but I also understand keeping things in line and making it look symmetrical, so...
So one of the challenges there, tenant space has, is actually a very narrow... A pretty narrow space compared to some of the other units. So they don't get a huge sign. Because you get... The size of the sign is based on the frontage width.
Right. I think the color, though, will help, because it's kind of stands out.
If you recall, the, like, I think Bath &amp; Body Works, if I've got the name right?
Yes.
They were the first kind of outlier in the, like, the Albrecht century in that mall, breaking away from just the red-only, or whatever restriction was. And it's not all hell breaking loose, but there's just some... The variety is being... We loosened the strings about six or seven or eight years ago on this, because of just how aesthetically pleasing the whole area's turned out with the landscape and everything else. So they're not groundbreaking here. Someone else has already fought that battle, and loosened up a little bit.
Yeah. And it was difficult, because each business has a traditional signage, and people kind of have gotten, like McDonald's, who doesn't look for the arches, you know?
Yeah.
So that's kind of nice that we did loosen up a little bit.
I'll make a motion to approve the business plan of operation as presented, and to approve the panel signs as presented.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay. Thank you for coming. How did you get drafted to be here, by the way? What's your role?
I'm the franchisee.
All right. Well, how many other franchises do you have?
This will be our 10th one.
10th one. Where are the other ones at?
We're a few up here, so we moved a husband and a wife that partner with us, which is how we got in the Wisconsin market, but most of it's back in Iowa and Illinois, so...
Good country, so thanks. Thanks for coming. You'll be busy.
I'm excited for it.
All right. Good deal. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck. Okay. So 10B, Planner Report in Response to Regional Analysis of Impediments for Fair Housing Study. Sounds ominous, but it's not.
So this is a report that Waukesha County require... Is required to submit. They're required to submit it to, I don't know, I'm assuming it's the, the federal government for fair housing. And they have to prepare a report each year, and then they seek report information from certain communities. I think you have to meet like a population size in order to have to meet the threshold. So we're just doing our due diligence and submitting our annual report, and one of the requirements is we have to identify two things that we're going to do in 2025 to support fair housing. And so I already submitted this to the county to get their preliminary approval, and then I'll send it formally tomorrow if you approve it. But what we did for this year is we went to the impediment number four, which is restrictive zoning regulations for group homes and community living facilities, and marked both of those items stating that you recently adopted, that you proactively adopted an ordinance in 2024, but we can use it for 2025 because we didn't use it in 2024. To allow flexibility in the regulations for separation distances for community living arrangements if they go through a conditional use process. So the city has the ability to waive the separation requirements. Doesn't mean you have to, but you have the authority to do it. So it has been approved, so I'm just looking for acknowledgement of the fair housing statement. And then it'll, may or may not come back next year. Staff has been discussing that we can probably just submit this by staff to, to the county going forward.
I have a question. I know what a group home is, but what is the community living facility? Is that like senior living?
So it's, it's a community living arrangement, which is like an adult group home that has to meet certain statutory standards. So I think they have, they can only have a limited nursing care, but they do have live-in, they, they, they can have live-in care, but there's limitations on when you go from the threshold of adult living to a nursing home. And it has to do with the amount of care, I believe.
So is this a CBRF?
Yeah, a community living arrangement.
That's what I figured this is.
There, I think there are other.
We have at least one.
Types of community living arrangements, but a CBRF is one of them, yeah.
Okay.
The, this approval process has apparently been going on annually for the last decade plus without actually bringing it to the Plan Commission because we don't, it's not necessary, but Amy was approached for it the first time, saying, so she wanted to let you guys know what was going on in the background, just saying we're acknowledging the fact that there's a desire to provide different housing arrangements in every community from the federal government on down and that we're describing what impediments exist, what we do to circumvent them and make it available if it's, if it can be. And so it's an, it might be on Elon Musk's list, I don't know. But it's something that, something that we're doing. So it's a lot of, just being a spectator on the sidelines, seeing Amy's back and forth, one of her questions was how long, is, is there an expiration date to this based on what we, and there isn't. This is just an ongoing.
Process.
Form, let's just say that. So do you, do you need, there's not a motion for this? This is just, you're making?
I think if you want to make a motion, I would just acknowledge the, the, the statement.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the regional analysis of impediments to fair housing study.
I'll second.
Any discussion or further questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, thanks, Amy. Anything else? Well, let's see, that's new business. It's been 11 comprehensive plans, zoning and ordinance revision. There's none, okay. Reports of city officials, there's correspondence, planner, anything else to add? Nope, Scott is not here. He did, Scott did share with me and I'll, I'll send it out. I should have forwarded it, I think I got it yesterday. He sent me an analysis of just quantifying the number of building permits by year over the past like six years-ish or maybe even more than that. Interestingly, we had, last year was kind of a peak of a record, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200. Didn't know that he dealt with three or four permits a day. So I don't know if that means he's overpaid or underpaid, but. Said he expects 2025 to be close, but not at that level. But I'll, I'll show the numbers and we can have Scott answer to it in our next meeting. That's it for Building Inspector. Next Plan Commission meeting is March 26th, and submittal for that meeting was today, so we should have a good handle on what that's going to be soon. With that, seeing no further business, our meeting is now adjourned at 7:41 PM. Thank you.